Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May edition of the Russell Library Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:33 PM. First item on the agenda is a review of the Community Dialogue Framework, which appears on page two of the agenda. I will maybe just highlight one section that kind of random here. Challenge and debate the merit of ideas and not the person supporting it. I encourage everyone to review the Community Dialogue Framework as always. Next item on the agenda is Mission Moment. Libraries, the library's mission, of course, is we empower people to grow, connect, strive, and thrive. And we have a special mission moment this month, which will be a dual purpose of a mission moment and also a reintroduction to some and an introduction to others of Cindy Sanders, who is a former trustee who recently rejoined the board. So we're very happy to see her back. So I will recognize Cindy Sanders at this, at this point to offer a, our mission moment for the month.
Thank you, Amen. You know, when, when Amen told, when I saw the agenda and I saw the mission statement and everything, I did think back that for a long time, like forever, I've always loved libraries. And in my neighborhood, we had the Louisa May Alcott Library. And on my way back and forth to school or wherever I was going, I would always stop in there. It was a small, dinky little thing, but I loved it. And then I grew up and came here and, and we had the Elihu Buritt Library. And I remember like sitting on the floor and the stacks and looking at all of the stuff that I was supposed to, you know, be doing. And that was fun. Then they came and installed Russell Library. And I was doing some community theater work then, and I would just sit on the floor to try to find different things to do with the, with the theater groups. And I was, I was learning without being schooled. And I think that's what I enjoyed most. I was brought onto the board by a connection with other board members who also knew my passion that I didn't really explain to anyone because I didn't know it then. But they saw in me someone who enjoyed what the library does and can do. And so for, I think it was about six years, I was on the library board. And in that time, I left one job and started my own business. And between the two, I began to grow. I, when I became president, there's so much more to board positions than just coming to a meeting. And I quickly found that out. But you, you learned so much more stuff that I just didn't, didn't know existed. I should have, but I didn't. Then I joined the, when I left the library, Russell Library, joined the ACLB Board, the ACLB. And I continued to grow and strive because we would put on an annual conference and the energy and information that went into all of that. Again, you know, I go back to, to your mission statement. And going back to being the connections, when Amen called and asked if I would come back on the board, that would not have happened if you couldn't get the connections with people. And I brought my grandson to Russell Library. And he had a ball. I mean, he was playing checkers, never knew what it was. He was touching things and making things and having a grand old time. So I do believe that within me, Russell Library has owned up to its, its mission. And they're on the precipice of, of an era that lots of different things, I believe, will happen. Some will like them, some will not. But everyone will grow and connect and strive and thrive because of it. I'm done, Amen.
Thank you, Trustee Sanders. And, and, and welcome back.
Welcome back.
We'll, we'll look forward to hearing from you under the Governance Section. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. This is the one and only opportunity for any members of the public who may be present to make a brief comment on an item that is on the agenda for today. Let's see. Checking first, I will check the trustees at Russell Library email address for any written submissions. And I do not see any direct emails to that email box, nor do I see any submissions through the webpage. So the third way that people can issue a public comment is showing up live in person. I see one person here who, one member of possibly the, the public, an onboard member who might be interested in making public comment. Are there any people present now who would like to make a public comment? While I wait for that, I'll, I'll recognize Andy Becker. I think he had his hand raised.
On the subject of public and attendance, I see on my screen the name Anne. Can, can we identify who that person is? I'm curious. That's not a, a member of our board, is it?
No, I think, I think that's actually the person I'm speaking of that, that I think might be a member of the public, possibly a member of the staff who might be interested in making a public comment. So this, this would be the opportunity to do so. Okay. All right. So getting no response, no public comment this meeting, we can move on to item three, approval of the minutes. I want to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 Board Meeting. Trustee Harris has swiftly made that motion, it looks like. And we have a second from Trustee Becker. Okay. Discussion. Greg.
It's a good motion. It should pass.
And Andy, do we have any, as, as the second, do we have any further comments?
Wendy has outdid herself, outdone herself again. Thank you, Wendy.
All right. Thank you. Not seeing anything further. We have a vote. All in favor, say aye or wave if you're on camera. Okay. Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, we have, it looks like two extensions from Trustee Dugan and Trustee Sanders. Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary, for, for these lovely minutes. Next item on the agenda, Administration Report. I will recognize Director Burkey.
Good evening, everyone. As always, I have submitted a written report in advance of this meeting. The only other thing I will add is, in the intervening time, since I submitted the report, I have secured us a spot in the Middletown Pride Parade for the Russell Library on Saturday, June 4th. So all Russell Library staff and trustees and friends and patrons are invited to join us and march under the Russell Library banner. So you'll be hearing a little bit more about that, that from us soon. I also have to pass on a story that was on our, our internal stories channel today that Kim Spockman passed along from the Info Department. She said, "This afternoon, a couple came in to digitize their wedding video from 27 years ago. They held hands through most of the digitization process and shared stories about family members who had celebrated with them. As the video was rendering to digital format, the wife asked how the library had decided to provide this service. When I mentioned that patron donations had made it possible, she smiled at her husband and said, 'See what you helped do.' Both agreed that they were happy to see the library providing such a unique service to people in Middletown. So the response to our digital conversion studio has been overwhelmingly positive, and it's really making a meaningful difference in people's lives. So it was, it was great to read that story. Otherwise, I, I don't have any other updates besides what's in my five or six page report this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Burkey, for that oral report. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I know that there was quite a lengthy written report as well. We have a comment. That's a wonderful story. I agree. Okay. Lots of any comments or questions? We, we can move on. Thank you, Director Burkey, for your, for your report and your, all, all, all the stellar work done this month. Next item on the agenda, Committee Reports. First item, Executive Committee, the executive, I'll give you the report. The Executive Committee did not hold our regular meeting. We did have a special meeting to largely cover items in executive session, which I cannot talk about in a public session here. I will note that, as, that as a result of, that some of the items discussed in Executive Committee, the library did issue a couple of letters to some members of the public who appeared at the City Council meeting recently and made some factually incorrect assertions to the City Council, which in my own personal opinion, were damaging to the library and, and to individual, both, both the individual, you know, certain individual library employees and also the library staff as a whole, frankly. So, you know, we asked these individuals to refrain from making future factually incorrect statements. And we actually saw, or actually, I didn't see because we didn't receive a copy of, of this document, but based on comments from the City Council, it sounds like the City Council also, that they received a, at least a partial retraction from one of the speakers. So we'll continue to monitor that situation and try to minimize the damage that this has done to the library and in the community, which I, I take pretty seriously. So it's a, you know, sad situation when, when, when we're trying to move forward and we get, you know, factually incorrect comments that you know, seeking to drag down people and also importantly to the members of this board, drag down the library. So we'll continue to monitor the situation. And other than that, though, as I mentioned, there was no regular meeting of the Executive Committee this month. Then we have any comments or questions regarding the Executive Committee reports? Okay, not seeing anything. We can move on to the Finance Committee. Andy.
Thank you. Amen. The Finance Committee did meet on Thursday, May 12th. Our agenda included a grants update from Ramona, who knocked our socks off with the exciting news of some of the grants that she and her staff were able to obtain for the library. Gave us the news on the Library Giving Day. We started to discuss the fiscal year 23 budget, which we will act on at our next Finance Committee meeting. And it will be brought to this board at its next meeting for adoption by the, by the, by the board. We had an endowment investment update from our representative, Robert Marsnick with Essex Financial, who really told us there are going to be some rough times ahead, hunker down in the stock market. There's not much we can do about it. That concludes my reporting. And thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any comments or questions for the Finance Committee? No. Thank you, Andy and Finance Committee members, for your continued work. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Governance Committee. So I'll recognize again Cindy Sanders.
Thanks, Amen. On May 4th, the Governance Committee met, and we were asked to review a, a policy that was not on the agenda. So we agreed to do that. It's the unattended children's policy. And there weren't really any, that I could see major changes to it. Basically, they wanted to bring the age range within the limits of the state law and, and really get down on how we handle children who are left unattended when the library hours are closed. There was some discussion about how words may be changed and rearranged to have it more accessible to the public. But the general concept of the unattended policy was approved by, by our group, and, and it's has been sent back to the employees for their comments, to staff for their comments. And we expect to have that on the agenda next month and probably approve it so that we can bring it to the full board for approval next month. Because summertime is, it's very important to have an unattended children's policy in place when summer hits. The staff needs that. We did have on our agenda, the whistleblower policy. And we had some comments from some members of the staff that we're looking into. And again, seeing how we can make those, make the concept and, and the, and the content and the verbiage of what that policy is to include. Make that so everyone understands and can accept it. So we tabled that until the fall. Because with some of the research that needs to be done, it's going to take our administrative staff some time to kind of delve into that and to work through some of that. We had on our agenda item, a compilation of personnel policies. But again, it, it takes our administrative staff a while to kind of get it in the shape that we, as a committee, can look at it. So we tabled that until the fall also. So our hope is to bring the unattended children's policy back to this board next month for approval so that they can implement it. That's just about all.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments for Cindy and the Governance Committee? No. Okay, quiet group today. All right. Well, thank you, Cindy and members of the Governance Committee, for your continued work on, on those policies. And we'll look forward to see what happens with those items in progress. Next item on the agenda, Strategic Planning Committee. Tanisha.
Hello. The Strategic Planning Committee has not met in a couple of months. I do believe that there is a Vision Committee that, whose activities have kind of transferred much of the strategic planning committees operatives since moving out of the plan that was created with our consultant. So that is the update as far as I can give it. I think it's probably time to swap out our monthly check-ins with that of the Vision Committee, who I think is carrying the banner of those activities. On a separate note, having nothing to do with that committee, but still question, I keep asking the demographic question around the staff. The last I heard was like, I should have to find it someplace. If anybody has an idea of where I could find that information or who to go to, that would be really awesome.
Um, which, what kinds of demographics would you be looking for?
I want to know the racial makeup, the gender makeup. It'd be amazing to know where people lived. Are they from Middletown or from the surrounding region? Or are they from other places? Be great to know what their economic makeup is. I believe my last guidance was to go to the city. I believe that was the, the last communication I had with anybody on staff or with the board. But I just wanted to re-elevate that because it's like something that I'm interested in, but seem to be getting, having a hard time getting that information.
In terms of the term economic makeup, what would that entail?
I mean, best scenario, case scenario would be knowing what the salary ranges of our staff. But I'm interested in knowing who works at the library so that when items that come up in governance around children being left behind in their ages, I have an understanding of who's on the receiving end of those interactions with, with the community. And also I can be strategic and thoughtful about offering suggestions on the board level. But right now I have no idea who works there except for the people I happen to see when I go. And I'm making assumptions about that, that may not hold true to what is actually the makeup of the, the staff.
There was a, there was a survey that went out through the Public Library Association several months ago that libraries could, could opt into that had, you know, some of those demographic markers in it. So race, gender. It was, I think it was mostly race and gender. And I know I started working on it. So I can actually get you what I have, Tanisha, and we can go from there. Okay.
That's great. I also feel like I'm unhelpful in the most recent kerfluffle because I also have no understanding of who works at the library. And Jen did amazing work. And I think we also discovered a lot of things in that work that she did that to my eyes preempted some of what has happened in the past couple of weeks. So I just want to have as much information as possible so that I can be as helpful of a member as possible.
I can, I can get you that survey information.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions for the Strategic Planning Committee? Okay, I, I will just, I will note that the the Vision Committee actually disbanded before last summer. So there has been no continuing work that the Vision Committee has, has done. So I would suggest that at this point, we probably hold a vision of the Strategic Planning Committee to determine next steps because the work that, you know, that, that there is no work being done in the Vision Committee. That was a temporary item and the, the final report went out, I believe, last, last July. So just something to keep in mind going forward. All right. Any further comments or questions for the Strategic Planning Committee? Okay. Not seeing anything. We'll move on to the Facilities Committee. Steve.
Yes, we did have a meeting recently and we discussed the upcoming results of the city's Arcade RFP, where we are as a library, mentioned as an either or possibility as having some part of of involvement in, in that development. So we discussed if we were to be involved in those, in that area of development, what we would like to see as a presence, a street presence for the library, if, if we were involved in that project so that we'd be ready when the developer came around to see what we wanted to do, with some idea of what it was or where we wanted to be on that site, if in fact, we were invited to be on that site. We also discussed a developing program that Ramona and staff have been working on. And that is an editable form on the Russell Library website. So if you want to take a look at it and add any of your comments or any of your ideas, that would be great to have as an addition to our gathering information for a future library. And that's basically it.
Thank you, Steve. Any? Wendy. Oh, you're muted, Wendy.
Where, where is this document on the Russell Library public website? Or on Google Docs or?
I'm sorry, Steve, can you clarify which document you were referring to?
Oh, you're, you're developing program.
Oh, the building program?
Yes.
Um, it's not on the website yet. It's still in draft form.
Okay, sorry. We discussed putting it on there so that we could all edit it, correct?
The Facilities Committee, yes. It's on, it's a Google Doc right now that's available to the Facilities Committee at this time.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It's, it's just the Facilities Committee at the moment. Thanks.
But I did, I did survey all of the staff. I met with a focus group of the friends of the library. Obviously took notes from the findings of the Vision Committee and incorporated, incorporated those all into the current draft. So it's getting there.
Okay. Any further comments, questions for the Facilities Committee? All right. Not seeing anything. Thank you, members of the Facilities Committee. Next item on the agenda, under Unfinished Business is Beating Format. This is the opportunity for us to kind of reflect briefly on, on the meeting format. As everyone can tell, it's virtual this, this month due to rising COVID numbers. And just to make sure that all of our board members are, and employees are, are, are safe. I, I will, you know, have to reevaluate going forward, but the good news is that, is this meeting would suggest we can in fact have virtual meetings, is my understanding. So, you know, we'll, we'll continue to to roll with the punches here. Also, I will note, under related to meeting format, the retreat, it looks like it's not going to happen in the immediate future because we couldn't get a, I really wanted, if we were going to do a retreat, I really wanted to identify a, a, a time and date where, when everyone could attend. So we will get out more dates either in the summer or perhaps the fall, depending on other events. I will note that Secretary Berlin followed up with, and actually, Wendy, do you want to give a brief report to, to the board on the, on the Board Basics training that, that you updated me on? Or I can, yeah.
Well, one of the things that the ACLB, excuse me, does is, as Trustee Sanders knows, is provide a about one hour workshop called Board Basics. And because of the continued unavailability of Don Laval at the State Library, our president and vice president have reworked the presentation. And I just heard today that they're pretty much ready to go with it. They have a couple other libraries who had requested it before we did. So I think if, if we don't get to it till the summer or the fall, that would be fine. But they, they can do it virtually. They have a PowerPoint and they, they are planning to make it quite interactive so that board members can speak and ask questions and react. I'll just mention that the president is having a knee replacement in July, so we may be looking at the fall. Although if you have a bad knee, you could sit at a computer, right?
Well, I guess maybe depending on the person or Well, I guess maybe depending on the person or depending, being exactly what the problem is with the knees, you know, but if it were me, if we were talking about this president, I would probably be lying down somewhere, but, but that, but that president's probably a lot tougher than me. So.
You have to do your rehab and you can't just lie around when you have a knee replacement.
I actually have a pedal powered computer. So that would be very complicated for me.
Pedal powered? Oh my gosh.
Wow.
Okay, I'm impressed.
Yeah. Well, we're not going to hold a vote on it, but it, but I will note that looking around, everybody seemed surprised and impressed by that comment. Okay. All right. So, 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 so we'll, we'll continue to work on, on a retreat. Date. Next item in the gender, there's nothing under new business. So the next item is announcements. This is the portion of the meeting where anyone likes to make an announcement, any board members like to make announcement unrelated to other items, they do so at this point. Do we have any announcements?
Yes.
Okay. That's Greg.
Last Tuesday, I wasn't at the council meeting. And my excuse was that I went to meet with Lech Vowenza. The former president of Poland and former head of the solidarity labor movement. I was, he, he, well, he spoke in Polish with an interpreter. And the reason he's around is he's doing a fundraising tour of the United States to get money for Ukrainian refugees in Poland who incredibly enough met number about three million, mostly women and children, he said. So that was a thrill. It's now going to be for the rest of my life, a picture on my cell phone. My, my, my main picture on the front page, whatever you call it for, for a smartphone. And I just, he was, to my amazement, he was a funny speaker as well as profound. And I mean, he, at the end of the speech, when he's going to take questions and answers, he said that he hoped that the questions were challenging because, because he's an old man and if they're not challenging, he may fall asleep. Anyway, but somebody, he was on the profound side. Somebody said, where do you think the leadership is going to come for the next phase of things, which he felt was, you know, sort of defanging Russia and defanging China. So that all the countries in the world were sort of like with the modern program of you have mild governments that work to better the people and not to have war and stuff like that. So, so we're, who, whom do you, who do you think are going to be the leaders in the next phase here? Cause you're old and and he said, um, he said, well, I'm an electrician. This is interpretation and the way the interpreter was saying, I'm an electrician. And I ended communism in Poland and brought down the Soviet Union and I didn't have your education or your looks. Said, if I had them, just think what I could have done. Well, you do have, you have your education and your looks. So that's, that's my answer to your question. Boom for thought, huh? Anyway, I just wanted to share that that wonderful thing happened. It was a great occurrence of a friend of mine. I would never have known about it if a friend of mine from law school hadn't told me about it and got me into it. So I'm very grateful to him and I just want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any further announcements? Ramona.
Well, I was waving to Shana because she had to go, but also a quick announcement. Don't forget the annual company meeting is on Zoom on Monday, June 13th at 6:00 PM. And Kate will be sending out the save the date soon if she hasn't already today.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. I should have mentioned that under meeting format. Okay. Any, all right. Not seeing any further announcements. We can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is open forum slash general good and welfare. Do we have any items under any open forum, general good and welfare items where members like to share? Okay. Not seeing anything. We can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is executive session. I will entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters related to strategy, personnel contracts, property and pending litigation. Greg has quickly made the motion, which was seconded by Kellen. All in favor, say aye or wave if you're on camera. Okay. It's unanimous in favor of entering executive session, which we will do at 7:08 PM.
This meeting is being recorded.
All right. The next item on the agenda, it's data one, we're back from executive session. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Looks like Steve made the motion, which was quickly seconded by Greg. All in favor, say aye or wave if you're on camera. Okay. It looks like it's unanimous in favor of adjournment at 8:01 PM.